Order. If everyone will please stand for our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. All right, good evening to everyone on this cold, blustery, nice fall day. I like it. Good weather. And good evening to all my fellow board members. Everybody's had a chance to look through the minutes of the September 12th regularly scheduled meeting. If there are no changes, then I need a motion to approve those minutes as presented.
Motion.
Back.
Motion second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Right, everybody's had a copy of the September 12th closed session minutes. If there's any changes to those, we'll need to make those in closed session. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Do we have any additions or deletions to our agenda?
No, sir, we do not.
Here none, I'll entertain a motion to approve as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, matters of the public. Good news, Mr. Rice.
Mr. Chairman, would you mind helping me? Good evening. Tonight, I will be presenting to you the Rotary Student of the Month, first for Pamlico County Middle School. The Rotary Student of the Month from Pamlico County Middle School for October is Melody Armstrong. Melody is a very conscientious student who wishes to do well at any task she is given. She is a friend to many and helps others without being asked. When two of her classmates left early for a volleyball game, she took her own notes and her classmates' notes in their science journals to ensure that they didn't get behind. She is polite and respectful to her teachers as well as her peers, and we are proud of her hard work and the kindness that she shows daily. Congratulations, Melody, Pamlico County Middle School Rotary Student of the Month. Next, from Pamlico County High School, the Rotary Student of the Month from Pamlico County High School is Maya Smith. Maya's not here tonight. She's actually out of volleyball here. But she is a senior at Pamlico County High School and is very involved in both academics and athletics. She is a straight A student and a stellar athlete competing in varsity volleyball, varsity basketball, and varsity track and field. She has been seen on numerous occasions going out of her way to clean up other people's trash throughout her building. Maya has been integral in welcoming nervous freshmen and other students new to our school, and she is always willing, always making sure people who are sitting or walking alone know that they don't have to be. She is the epitome of what our Pamlico County High School Kane's family stands for and is both a model student and all-around wonderful human being. Congratulations, Maya, Pamlico County High School Rotary Student of the Month. And additionally, she was selected by her peers last week to represent Pamlico County High School as our homecoming queen. Congratulations to Maya. Her mother's here, if she would come up. Her mother can come up and present her with a certificate. That is our good news for this evening. Thank you.
All right, we're at public comment on our agendas. First thing I need to read is our public comment guidelines. The Pamlico County Board of Education welcomes the opportunity to hear from the public during its regularly scheduled meetings. The public comment period is open for members of the public, including parents and students, to voice compliments, concerns, or complaints about performance of school personnel, implementation of board policy, the quality of the educational, education programs or school facilities. According to Policy 1326, presentations are limited to a maximum of three minutes. Obscene, vulgar, or profane statements, personal attacks, and insults, and statements reasonably perceived to be disruptive or eminently threatening to the orderly operation of the meeting shall not be permitted. All right, Mr. Pierceall?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Doug Pierceall, Pamlico County. And I'm here tonight representing the NWSCP. We came here on numerous occasions last school year and are fighting the school. But I'm here tonight to thank you and congratulate you for getting the $50 million grant, and that we're still on board. We're still here. We're supportive. And whatever you need us to do as it relates to our children, children is the greatest commodity that you got at this school. We're here for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pierceall. All right, moving on to our superintendent's report. Ms. Jackson?
Good evening, everybody. My superintendent's report is also short and sweet. First of all, the membership report. You have that in front of you. The primary school is down one, Anderson Holding Steady, middle school down one, and the high school down six for a total of minus eight. Next, if you've been living under a rock for the last few days, you may not have heard that Pamlico County Schools did receive a needs-based public school capital fund grant. What was the amount? Let me think. $50 million. So let's give a big round of applause for that again. So many people in this room and not in this room had a lot to do with that. There was 167, I think, applications from various districts in the state, and nine were chosen this time. And so we're very excited. And on Monday, Mr. Prescott and I had, last Monday, had a chance to go to DPI for the actual awards presentation, and Mr. Rice was there close by for another conference. So he came by, and it was very humbling and very exciting to get recognized for this. And we know that this is just the beginning of a lot of work that we have to do now. But while I was there, they asked me to speak on just what it was going to mean to Pamlico County. And that was very easy for me because of the emotion and the heart part of what that middle school specifically has gone through, and really all the schools when there was a flooded school. And so that part was really easy for me. And, you know, I had, well, you know, before the, you know, the meeting, well, when it was over, we pretty much shut the place down, and we had all of the legislative people that were there sitting around our table talking to us about, now, what do you need and what can we do? Because we were hoping this is just the start, and that this is something that they will continue to do for the schools in North Carolina, because it started a while ago with that, what we thought was big at the time, 15 million, when Jones County got that to start their school. And then now, you know, they're giving $50 million grants to schools. And so I don't know if you want to say anything about that specifically. We do have, I will say real quick, a trip coming up very soon that we are hoping to take to visit a school very similar to the one that we would like to design, and I'll be talking to the board a little bit more about that. We are planning to take teachers, administrators, board members, commissioners, county people, central office people. I sent out an email last night to get this process really started. Of course, we have an idea. We had to have an idea before we could even apply for the grant. But now we want to put pen to paper and really start making some plans for our kids. So do you want to say anything about that?
I'll just echo your comments. It was, it was a, as I have stated, it was a great day for Pamlico County Schools. I would echo Mr. Pierceall. It's a great day for the children of Pamlico County, a great day for Pamlico County. But I've also said, this is where the work really starts now. We've got a conceptual idea, but now we've got to really, I guess, sharpen the pencil and hone things down to do what is going to be the best thing. Because this might be, in our lifetime, it's probably a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. And I don't think the county's ever had a grant of this magnitude that can really change in a lot of things that's going to happen in this county. And I think the best thing is for education, because that's for our children, it's for our kids. A lot of us sitting up here went to school in this county, and this is a way that we can give back. That's exactly what we want to do, make it better than it was when we were here. So it was, it was a, presentation was good. And as you said, when we left, the legislators who were there, the assistant superintendent was sitting, they were all sitting around our table. So it was, it was a good day, very good day.
Definitely. Gosh, I had another thought that left me. But anyway, so we, like you said, we still have work to do, but it's very exciting to be able to think about that that's something for the future of our students. And, you know, while I was there, we were there making that presentation, you know, we were all worried what Ian was going to do. And literally, it was very timely, because we, I mean, as I'm talking, there was that possibility that that school could flood again. So it was, the place was very quiet as we were talking about, you know, the need and what it was going to mean for our county. So anyway, very excited about that. And we thank y'all for all your support.
But Ms. Jackson ought to be given the credit she deserves for us getting this $50 million. We would never, she's been working on this for two or three years, and it's made a lot of contact with the people in Raleigh who count. And I don't think without, I think, and John spoke to this in his comments to the paper, we would not have received this money without the effort she put forth to get it.
Absolutely.
I know, I know a lot, I know some of the inner workings, and I know the contacts she's made, the personal relationships she's developed with people at the state level. People, we got $50 million because of her efforts. And other people, I'm sure deserve some credit, but we wouldn't have gotten it if it had not been for her, and I just want to say that.
Absolutely, yep.
I appreciate that. But it was a group effort, and I've been here 34 years, so I know a few peoples. It helped for sure. Item 3.3, the North Carolina School Board Annual Conference. As you see, that is coming up the 14th through the 16th. And I know that you guys have probably already told Tiffany whether or not you can make that trip. She does have a packet for you tonight, if you want it now, because, you know, she's getting real close to that special day. If you want them now, otherwise, I'll hang on to them. If you want to be able to make some plans or whatever, there's some agendas and such in there. So if you want one, she's happy to give that to you now, or we can hold on to it. Because there is another board meeting before that, that conference. But if you would like it, just raise your hand, and she'll get it to you. Thank you, Tiffany. So item 3.4. Were there any questions about the conference or anything? Okay. Item 3.4, the board work session and data dive. So last Wednesday, we had our first early dismissal day for this year, and we decided we would spend that time while the, because it's really hard, as you can imagine, for us to get all of our administrators together in a building, obviously, when kids are here, because then who's going to be there for the kids? So we decided, and in the summer, we're able to do that, but we just got our testing information, and we decided we would take some time. We invited all the board members, and we had lunch. It was very nice. And then we kind of literally dove into the data. Ms. Dixon and Ms. Davis did a great job really kind of explaining a lot of what that, what those things meant. Because if you're not in it and don't use it a lot, you may not understand what it means comparing it to other schools in our region or in our state. So they did a great job with that. I'm happy to say every single board member was able to come for a little while. That was amazing in the middle of a day. Thank y'all that left work to come for a little while. We really appreciate it. And then after that, we took a break, and then the rest of us in the room, all the rest of the leadership in the district, we used that time to really work on some of our strategic planning and our mission and vision for the district. And so it was a really good day of thinking about what do we want for Pamlico County Schools. And the feedback from everybody in that room was amazing. I got text messages from you guys saying thank you for, we've never done that before. It's a first for us, and it really was good. And really, not only so we could, you know, give you all this information, but so that you could ask questions and give us information, too. And I know a lot of you left out of here that day with some things that, you know, you can use now to arm you with questions when people say things to you or whatever. Ms. Dixon and Ms. Davis, not to put you on the spot, but anything about Wednesday that you would like to comment on? It was a good day.
I would just say again, thank you, the information that the school leaders provided, the input that you all gave, the board members and district leadership. Thank you for that. We were able to put that to use as recently as this morning, when our district leadership team amended our cabinet and started drafting our district goals to align with the state Board of Education goals. And we're hoping to push those out to principals on Thursday, so that then school-level goals will align and have our strategic plans ready to present to you in December. So thank you again, and we hope that this will be the first of many of these work sessions that can keep us all in the loop.
And I don't know if it's just me, but I have felt like for the last two to three years, we've been just keeping our nose above the water. And I feel like we're finally just really swimming and making some ground and doing things the right way, because we're able to be back to kind of normal. So anyway, anything else? No? Thank y'all. And y'all did a lot of pre-work before that, and so did Dr. Bracy, and we really appreciate that. Item 3.5, you have on your table a invitation, because we would like to celebrate our two board members who next month will be your last board meeting, Paul and Judy. So we have an invitation that we're going to have an off-campus dinner, and we hope that everybody can make it. Please make it. And you can bring your spouse or significant other. And they both said it was okay, because I was so afraid they'd get up here and say, we're not doing that. But they were like, okay, as long as it's low-key. It's going to be low-key, I promise. So anyway, with that, that's all I have. Mr. Chairman?
All right, always give a time if there's any board members that would like to make a comment. All right, hearing none, we'll move on to our consent agenda. We've only got one item, so everybody's had a chance to look at that. If there are no questions or discussion about this, I'll entertain a motion to approve as presented.
Motion.
Back.
Motion second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right. Moving on to finance, Mr. Curtis.
I think we're supposed to wish him a happy birthday today.
That's right. Bless. There's a lot of red balloons around his door today.
It's a touch of sarcasm.
You know, it's a big.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Mr. Curtis.
Happy birthday. You want us to sing?
Oh, let's do it. He would kill me.
Thank you.
You have two documents before you, both documents pretty much have the same information in them. It's just in different stacks. First one is the budget resolution. As you recall, the board has approved interim budget resolutions for the last couple of months until we got some more firm numbers from DPI so we could do the budget resolution. So I'll programs. Again, if you have any questions, you can certainly ask. I'm not going to go through all of these numbers. But if you'll look at almost close to the bottom, the total current expense fund appropriation is $4,451,000. Right below that in Section 2 are the revenues that will be funding the local budget. The county appropriation for Pamlico County Schools is $3,735,099, and for the charter school, $584,901. Local revenue is $31,000, and fund balance appropriation is $100,000 for the $4,451,000. All right, Section 3 is the state public school fund. Again, the expenditures are first, divided up into the purpose-function codes. And you see the total state public school fund appropriation, $11,333,083. Again, this is just the beginning budget. I mean, these numbers change. We get revisions from DPI probably at least once every couple of weeks. So I will be coming back to you with budget amendments for these. And then at the bottom, of course, you see the one revenue source, and that's from the state of North Carolina, same amount, $11,333,083. At the top of page 3 is the federal grant fund. And again, these allotments are a little more sporadic coming in, so they typically a different timeframe on those. But this is, this is pretty much what we know so far. For the expenditures, we have total grants of $1,066,380. I have not put the COVID monies in there yet. This past year's budget didn't include that, so I didn't want to skew the numbers and add all those COVID ESER cares monies in there to make it look like we've got some huge increase in federal funds. Then right below that, you see the revenue, the same amount, $1,066,380. And then Section 7, now at the very bottom, is the child nutrition fund, $550,000. Again, this is just an estimate. One thing that's changing this year is we're going back to the original school lunch program, where during the COVID, all students pretty much ate free breakfast and lunch. That did change this year. The high school lunch, they do have to pay for that now unless they apply for free or reduced lunch, just the way that it was initially. So that, plus the fact of the increasing cost of the foods, it will be, I think, somewhat of a challenging year for the child nutrition fund. But I hope next month, when the audit report is presented, that you'll see they did very good this year and will have a good report.
So K-8 will still be?
Yes, K-8 is still free.
Well, you know, if you read the stuff that's in the media, nobody's eating free now. I mean, that's the impression they give anyway.
Well, we're a part of that community eligibility provision that we started about five or six years ago, which allows, with us, three of our four schools qualify. So that's basically why they're all eating free. And that has proven to be pretty advantageous for us. Probably a lot of the school districts that are in not-so-low-wealth areas probably don't qualify for that, for that program. Okay, and then at the top of page 4, you have the revenues, $520,000 in federal funds. That's USDA grant reimbursements. And then $30,000 in local funds. That would be any paid lunches or any supplemental sales that come through the cafeteria. Section 9, right below that, is the, is fund date. The other restricted fund, total amount is $501,590. And right below that are the matching revenues. The main things that are in the fund date is the NC pre-K program and the ROTC program, where we do get partial reimbursement from the federal government for salaries and benefits of the two instructors at the high school. Okay, on page 5 is the capital outlay budget. And of course, this has already been approved by you, the Board of Education, and funding put in place by the county commissioners. Category 1, you see there, lands, buildings, repairs, $104,700. And you see the projects there that were approved. On the next page, on page 6, under category 2, is furniture and equipment. And you see those items there. Mostly, there's some for maintenance, transportation, but most of it is directly for the schools. And then, of course, you have the technology budget, which is a large part of the, of the capital outlay budget. So category 2, $353,664. And then category 3 is the lease purchase of a new activity bus. We did finally receive that bus this summer, and so it is, it's the one that has the handicap accessibility. So we're thrilled to have that bus run up and running. And we will start this year making those three $35,000 payments on that, on that bus. Section 12 there at the bottom shows the revenue sources, the county appropriation, $400,000, and then the fund balance appropriation of $93,364. Okay, and that's basically it for that document. I just, I want to tell you just a couple of things on the uniform budget. Again, it's a different format, but it's pretty much the same information. If you'll go past those two, first two cover pages and go to page 1 of 12. You have the revenues at the very, kind of in the middle of that page there, and it's broken down by state, federal, local sources. And then there on the right at the top, you see the headings of local current expense, state public school fund, so-and-so on over for all the funds. And then you see the total budget for, projected budget for this year, 2022, '23. And then you see what we started out with last year. So the numbers in green, those are the, that is the amount of the increase over last year. So this year's total budget is an increase of $553,350 over the initial budget last year. And then if you look at those columns there, like local current expense, increase in $320,000. That's the 8% increase that we received in current expense funding from the county. State public school fund, $93,535. That number doesn't mean a whole lot to me. We get the, we get quite a few allotments that are in position allotments and months of employment. And even if we get a reduction, like we got, you know, a slight cut in classroom teaching positions, they still up the dollar amount value of those because of the increases in salaries and the increases in the benefits. So I can assure you that that $93,000 won't begin to touch the amount of the salary increases and benefit increases that we're going to experience from people that are paid out of the state public school fund. Federal grant fund, increase of $35,471. Child nutrition, $25,000. Capital outlay, $60,364. And that's an increase, $25,000 increase from the county commissioners, and then the increase that we did with the fund balance appropriation. And the other restricted fund, increase of $18,980. So the initial budget will be $18,395,417. Over on the left there, that's just, that's strictly the county numbers. Last year, the total funding, current expense, and capital outlay was $4,375,000. And this year, it's $4,725,000 for a 7.89% increase, a $345,000 increase. That's pretty substantial from the county. So we're very appreciative and thankful for that. Now, at the bottom of page 1 starts the expenditure section. Again, this is kind of, these are basically the same numbers that were on the budget. Again, this is kind of, these are basically the same numbers that were on the budget resolution, just in a different format. It continues on to Page Two, and then over to Page Three, Page Two and then Page Three. And again, same numbers there. Beginning on Page Four is just the revenues. It splits up the revenues in details. I think there's Pages Four through Nine goes through all of that and divvies it up between local, state, federal, child nutrition, capital outlay, and other restricted. Again, I'm not going to hit all those numbers unless you're just dying to hear them. So I will leave those as they are. And then the last three pages, Pages Ten, Eleven, and Twelve, is the breakdown of the capital outlay budget, again, by categories One, Two, and Three. Same information that was in the budget resolution. We will, obviously, as the year goes by, there'll be changes in these numbers. And I'll come back to the Board with budget amendments periodically during the year. So, Mr. Chairman, we just need approval so we can just continue to move forward with our funding and can just continue to pay bills and pay salaries.
All right.
If I have any questions, I'll be more than happy to try to answer those for you.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, raise your right hand. All right.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to agenda item into seven, Governance, 7.1. So as we have to do every month, we have to discuss our COVID-19 protocols for our schools. Our current position is where it's mask optional. I'll open the floor for discussion, or I'll entertain a motion to continue as we are doing.
Motion to continue.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, raise your right hand. All right. Dr. Patrick and?
I'm going to let him come on up and do that.
My volleyball lost. My volleyball lost. Yeah.
Good evening, Board members. Standing before you tonight for the approval. Discussion came up with the Policy Review Committee on Policy 2300 regarding the Board meeting times. After I met with the Policy Review Committee, I did have a discussion with some staff members, and there seemed to be an overwhelming joy and hope that the Board meeting times could change from 6:30 PM to 6:00 PM. But again, that's up to discussion and approval by the Board. We also mentioned that with, there are a couple of the changes that we would need to jump on immediately as far as public speaking to the Board. So we are going to take some additional steps to make sure if the policy is approved tonight and if the policy is adopted tonight, that we will notify the public in a couple of different manners so that they know when they'll need to sign up to speak. Also, one last thing, Mr. Chairman. We are hoping to kind of keep us on track with our adoption process if we can invoke Policy 1514 and approve those policies on first read tonight.
All right, so I think our first thing to discuss is Policy 2300, the time of our Board meetings. So the suggestion is to amend that or change that to six o'clock. Was that a, from the Policy Committee or staff or just kind of a joint agreement?
Some conversation has been hailed, and so I brought it up since we are in the process of adopting the policy. I did bring that up before the committee. And of course, the committee, you know, said that's something that the full Board will have to approve, so.
The floor is open for discussion. And everybody's quiet.
Mr. Chairman, it's okay with me either way, but I was just thinking about some of the central office staff members live in New Bern, so they sort of hang around after work to wait for the meeting. So it would probably be helpful to them, you know, thinking about people who get off work at five or so, that would still give them time to get here, I think. But I'm fine either way, so it's up to the rest of the world. I know some of the staff members, though, it might be helpful to them.
Helen, me and you work.
I'm okay with this.
How about our two new Board members that will be coming on? Is six going to be an inconvenience or is that okay? Okay.
Ms. Jackson, what do you think of the making sense of people here?
I think the earlier the better for the people here. But I know, like you said, you have to think about parents getting off at five and getting here for the good news. Because across the state, the times are all over the place. But I think that would be acceptable. My concern was the two Board members that were making sure they had time to get here.
Which now is going to go to four Board members that are working.
That's right. True. But I think, and I hadn't had a conversation with the staff about it, but I think that it would be fine. Because it means we're going to, I mean, because they go kind of late sometimes. I mean, you guys know that, especially after a closed session, and it would be nice to start a little earlier. The attorneys have a long drive back. But I'm good either way. I mean, it used to be 7:30 back in the day, so, yes.
So, remember that? So Brian, if we, so if we want to move it to six, so do we need to? Yes.
If we move to six, what time will be public comments? Will that hinder potential people being in the public comments, really what?
Well, it would be, sure.
So to answer that question, Mr. Gibbs, in one of the policies, actually, that process in itself is changing. So if adopted by the Board tonight, I'll just go ahead and put it out there, individuals who wish to speak to the Board, the deadline will not be 15 minutes prior to the meeting, it will be days prior to the meeting. So there's even significantly more time for individuals who wish to appear before the Board to sign up. So there will be no crunch, basically, to get here to sign up to speak to the Board.
So my question, Brian, if we change 2300 to six o'clock?
Right.
So do we do a motion to?
To amend.
Well, do we do a motion first for 1514 to waive the second reading policy? And then do a motion to approve the adoption of the 2000 Series policies as amended? Would that?
That would work. There's several ways of doing it, but that works fine.
Or if you got?
That works very well. They say as amended, the amendment specified that 2300 would start at six o'clock.
So I've heard no negative, anybody saying no to six o'clock. So I'll entertain a motion to waive Board Policy 1514 to waive the second reading prior to adoption.
Motion.
Motion and a second, all in favor, raise your right hand. All right, now I will entertain a motion to approve the adoption of the 2000 Series policies as amended.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, raise your right hand. All right. That was a smooth process, wasn't it?
It was. Now, on page 7.3, we need to basically pull back or archive the existing 2000 Series. And that list should have been shared with you, so we are going to pull those back on your approval tonight.
All right, so on 7.3, we need a motion to remove the policies presented from the old Board manual as they were replaced by new policies that were adopted tonight.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, raise your right hand. All right. And thank you, and thank you to our committee members. I know this is?
A lot.
It's a lot, but the process is working, I think.
Slow and steady. Slow and steady.
Thank you.
John, I have a question. The old policy manual and the new policy manual are being kept up to date on the website, correct?
Yeah, there's two different ones. If you go, it's confusing at first because there's two right now, the old and the new.
And a part of our contract and our agreement with the School Boards Association was during this process, they're going to make sure they keep them updated. And then the old policy manual will stay for a while, and then it will archive and know what's happening.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to seven. That's a good question. So I guess, will this start the next meeting? So?
You just approved it, so.
We just approved it. I know we approved the schedule earlier this year for our Board meeting. So when, Mr. Attorney, when does that take effect?
When we get to number eight, we can change it. If you flip over to number eight, after the closed session.
I think that's exactly right. We just either confirm that for this year or we just change the time to six o'clock.
Okay, all right.
So then, yes, next meeting.
Okay, so yeah, the next meeting will be six o'clock. And the, I guess for the public, you said y'all will be contacting to let folks know the change for public comment? Okay, good. All right, Mr. Dudley.
I moved at the Pamlico County Board of Education, entering to closed session to consider confidential student matters as provided in NC General Statute 143-318.11A1 and the Family Education Rights and Privacy Act 20USC 1232G and GS 115C-402. Confidential personnel matters as provided in NC GS 143-318.11A1 5 and 6 and 115C-319. And to consult with the Board of Education Attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege as provided in General Statute 143-318.11A3.
All right, have a motion, need a second.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, raise your right hand. All right, we'll be going in closed session, 7:12, somewhere around that.
To approve the personnel report for action as presented in closed session.
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand.
Oh, yeah.
All right, I need a motion to approve the out of district students as presented in closed session.
Motion.
Second.
Motion's second, all in favor, raise your right hand. Review next meeting dates, training and board events, so strike out that three in the time and put zeros there. So starting next month, all our board meetings will be starting at six o'clock. Tiffany, please email and remind me before that happens. I don't think there's anything else, so I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.